Special City Council meeting for our strategic plan workshop. I will call the meeting to order at four o'clock. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Here.
Councilmember Diedrich.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada.
And I am here. Councilman Diedrich, will you please have the honor of leading us in the flag salute, sir?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Diedrich. Now we are on item four, discussion items, the strategic plan workshop. I see our deputy city manager Rebecca Kramer at the podium. Can you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Mayor, Council, and public that have joined us today. We look forward to spending a little bit of time this afternoon. I'm sure everybody's very excited to be talking about the elements of our strategic plan, which is, I think, one of the most important planning documents that we have as an organization. We are currently in the second year of our current five-year planning period, which does extend through June of 2028. And as we head towards what is essentially the midpoint of our five-year planning period and begin to prepare for the development of our two-year budget, including both our operating and capital budget planning, this is a great opportunity for us to talk about the components of the plan, which really drive everything that we do as an organization, and then look at some possible adjustments that we might consider as we move into this second half of that planning period. I think it's important to begin first with answering the question, what is a strategic plan? And ultimately, why does it matter in an organization? Strategic plan at its core really sets a vision for the future and helps us to map out how we're going to meet our current and future obligations as a city. It helps us to ensure that everyone within the organization has an understanding of our priorities, as well as are able to work together to achieve a common set of goals. So the plan, as I mentioned, does guide everything that we do as an organization, including resource allocation through our city's operating and capital improvement program budget and how ultimately we prioritize our programs and projects. So our current strategic plan was developed over about a seven-month period. It compiled a whole series of information gathering that occurred, including stakeholder interviews, business and resident focus groups, as well as employee and community surveys, and a number of council workshops, with the plan being adopted in March of 2023 and then going into effect that July. So within the plan itself, a couple of important statements that are outlined in the plan that are driving components of the plan and everything that we do. One is our mission statement, and the other is the vision statement. So the mission statement essentially describes everything that an organization's purpose or reason for existing. It answers what we do. And for Minifee, our stated purpose is that we will provide essential services through teamwork, leadership, and transparency to improve the quality of life of our community. And our vision statement defines the organization's aspirations or answers the question, what will Minifee look like in the future? And so our vision statement states that Minifee is a premier, safe, and thriving and inclusive city that offers vibrant neighborhoods and panoramic scenic vistas with a rich history and flourishing arts, cultural amenities, and diverse recreation opportunities that make Minifee a desired place to live, work, play, and stay. Also encompassed within the plan itself are our guiding principles. These essentially represent the expectations for how, as an organization, we conduct our business, make decisions, and deliver programs and services. And so those principles include being people-focused and connected, accountable, and fiscally responsible, responsive and transparent, and solution-oriented, and proactive. So our strategic priorities, there are five of them that are outlined in the plan. These are our most important areas of focus as an organization. They encompass enhancing connectivity and mobility to meet the needs, the city's needs, with sustainable infrastructure, establishing a unique identity to develop the distinct sense of place, leveraging the city's historic and scenic assets, and making the city a desired destination for residents, businesses, and visitors alike; creating opportunities for community engagement and social infrastructure to bring people together; building a thriving economy by encouraging smart growth and supporting the city's business community so that residents have access to businesses, housing, employment, and well-paying jobs; and last but certainly not least is developing a safe and vibrant community so that Minifee is one of the safest cities where residents and visitors are secure in their neighborhoods and surrounding spaces. So within each one of these strategic priority areas, we do have a series of goals and objectives that are outlined, ultimately designed to support the vision for our future, and then a number of performance measures that are established to monitor progress. So of course, we have our implementation plan, which is included as part of your agenda packet and twice a year. That's what we use to monitor our progress towards meeting all of the goals and objectives that are established in each one of the priority areas. So we'll walk through all the existing goals and objectives that we have in each one of these areas and a couple of recommendations for consideration on adjustment, and then open time for discussion. So as we look at our connectivity and mobility priority area, there are six objectives that are outlined under the strategic priority. That includes creation of a traffic mitigation plan, the development of our transit mobility plan, increasing fiber optic connectivity to our traffic signals to improve traffic flow, the adoption of our complete streets plan, implementation of the smart city and broadband master plan, and then, of course, working in collaboration with the County of Riverside, surrounding communities, and regional partners to assess and mitigate impacts of growth and development outside of our city limits, providing for a regional infrastructure that's necessary, as well as essential services. So a couple of recommended adjustments that are presented for consideration in this area. Now that we do have our complete streets and active transportation plans in place, it's recommended that we shift our focus from plan development to actual implementation of that traffic mitigation plan. That's supported by a lot of the work that's been done in the allocation of resources, with more than 80% of this year's capital improvement program budget dedicated specifically to infrastructure projects. Along those lines, we're also recommending a shift of the plan's focus to address specifically last-mile projects to close the gaps in transportation within the city. And then with respect to grant funding, really looking at shifting from a simple increase in funding to really focusing on actively identifying and pursuing all grant funding opportunities that support our capital projects and, of course, align with our operational needs and strategic priorities. And if at any point through the presentation you have questions, I'm happy to stop and address those as well.
Deputy City Manager Kramer, I have a question.
Yeah.
We put "last mile" in quotation marks. What does "last mile" mean?
It's really connecting that last mile to multimodal. So whether or not it's the last mile to mass transit or closing sidewalk infrastructure or road infrastructure to make sure that we have that connectivity throughout the city. So when we're looking at safe routes to school, that we've got all of those connectivity points in place.
So do you mean filling in gaps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, filling in gaps.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily just a mile. It's just a term used to describe closing those gaps.
Okay, I wanted to-
That we have through the infrastructure.
Thanks, yeah. It was in quotation marks, so I wanted to understand the outside meaning.
That's a great question.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Oops. So with respect to the priority area identified specifically on our unique identity, there are three objectives that are outlined in this section, and that includes conducting our placemaking and tourism feasibility study, conducting a regional events assessment, as well as establishing a signature event for the city. And so while we've had some adjustment in the implementation timeline, this is well underway. We have the development of our placemaking, identity, and tourism master plan in progress now. That will encompass each one of these three objectives. And we have community and business workshops scheduled at the end of this month to address that priority area. With respect to our community engagement and social infrastructure, there are four objectives outlined under this priority. That includes amplification of, diversification of our communication efforts to increase awareness and understanding of what is going on in the city and what we do. That is through our print publications, electronic communications, town hall meetings, and the like. And then increasing opportunities to gather and support belonging and connectivity within the city; the creation of engagement opportunities and an understanding and participation in city planning, community events, and activities, as well as the development of unique park communities, green spaces, trails, cultural and recreational facilities, and programming, all to support the diverse needs of our community and in alignment with the adopted parks master plan. There are a couple of adjustments recommended for consideration under this priority area, one being, given that we included a modification or provision for a resident satisfaction survey in October of 2023, not long after the plan's adoption, council did take a look at conducting a statistically validated survey that would be citywide. And after extensive review of the costs and accounting for a number of other factors, council did make the decision at that time not to move forward. And so in place of doing that citywide or comprehensive resident satisfaction survey, staff are working to gather community feedback through various projects and plan development initiatives. That includes things like the placemaking and tourism master plan that we're working on right now. In addition to the change in the satisfaction survey approach, also a recommendation to consider establishing a youth and government program that ultimately would be used to educate students on municipal governance, encourage, of course, civic participation, and provide mentorship and career development opportunities. This really would help us to build upon our existing citizen engagement programs, like our Citizen Academy, but focus more specifically on youth in the community. With respect to development of a thriving economy, there are 11 objectives specifically outlined in this area. That includes the creation of our business incubator program and facility to support startups; streamlining the development process to support a business-friendly environment; partnering with our higher education institutions and other stakeholders to create workforce development programming that supports training and education of workers; creation of business incentive programs to attract and retain businesses in Minifee; developing a specific plan for the economic development corridor in the Southern Gateway Innovation District to support diversification of our economy; providing for enhanced entertainment opportunities to increase Minifee's commercial tax base; creating and maintaining a financial stability plan; increasing our reserve fund balances, diversification of our revenue streams, all designed to support financial stability in the long term; and implementation of our enterprise resource planning system, which is well underway at present, along with creating reports for monitoring performance of our development departments to streamline city operations. As a recommendation for consideration under this area, staff do recommend that we look at an evaluation of the city's business development needs and facility priorities prior to moving forward with consideration being given to the establishment of a business incubator plan or facility, just to ensure that we have a clear understanding of what would best serve our business community in terms of the type of development and supports that they need in our target industries. And then, again, our fifth strategic priority being a safe and vibrant community. We have a total of seven objectives that are outlined under this section of our strategic plan, all of which are well underway. There is various programs and activities that are in progress to support each one of these objectives. That includes enhancement of our public safety response times, development of a citywide safety plan, improvement in the safety infrastructure and technology. So this would be things like our streetlights, speed radar, feedback signs, flashing beacons on our crosswalks, surveillance systems, and the like, all designed to enhance a sense of security and well-being; continuing to support our professional training and development of the city's personnel to ensure that we're delivering high-quality services; creating a community preparedness plan; and collaboration, of course, with our community partners. We're doing a variety of things in this area, including working with our schools to develop safe neighborhoods, businesses, and vulnerable places; and then making progress towards our Vision Zero goal to reduce pedestrian and bicycle safety. We recently adopted the ordinance on e-bike safety and have a number of training programs that the police department's been working on with our schools and amongst a whole, a wide range of other activities that we're working on. And then beautification of our streetscapes in the city's main transit corridors and gateways. So that gives you kind of just a general overview of all the planned components. Some of the recommendations that we have for consideration on modification, and it's certainly welcome any feedback, just further discussion that you would like to have. Whatever amendments are discussed today, we'll bring back with an updated copy of the plan for adoption at a future meeting.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Kramer. Council, this is our opportunity for questions. Let's start off with questions first before we move on into discussion. Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Thank you. Ms. Kramer, going to the connectivity and mobility recommendations. I know that we had, with regard to the last-mile opportunities and that kind of thing, how does this overlap with the complete streets program that we just, it's, yeah, adopted July 2024? What are we missing on the complete streets program that the last-mile opportunities would fill in?
So we'll let Nick speak to that more fully, but I really think they fit together. It's really a focus on trying to close those last-mile gaps. And I think a lot of that was already identified within the complete streets plan collectively. And so really working is a shift towards implementation versus further plan development. And I don't know if you'd have anything else that you'd add to that.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin, Rebecca did an excellent job of explaining that. The complete streets does, is a master plan for the city that we use to develop our future CIP projects and working with our development agencies as well, or developers, as they plan their projects. The last mile is connecting, let's say, like a transit station to a community center or a grocery center, retail center, or actually to the college. So those are the last-mile connections. You can ride a bus to a certain point, and then you find how to get that last mile. And that would be like completing sidewalk improvements or looking at alternate forms of transportation, biking. You look at other cities, they have these bird scooters, bike share programs. Those are all types of last-mile type of implementations that you can continue to improve your mobility throughout your city.
So what is it that we are being asked to consider with regard to that recommendation? What is it that you don't already have, are empowered to do, that this recommendation would add?
We're looking more to start implementing a lot of these projects instead of continuing to develop the programs.
So as written, the strategic plan really calls for the development of two different plans. And really, we feel that the complete streets plan encompasses that. And we really want to shift the focus within the plan more specifically from an objective standpoint to implementation of the plan.
So it goes from figuring out what we need to do to figuring out how we can do it?
Exactly right. That's exactly right.
Great. I was worried we were going to go off on a whole separate plan
No.
that we'd just spend all that time on.
No, we just don't feel that there's a need for another plan. That complete streets plan really embodies exactly what we need at this stage, and it's really talking about how we implement it, how we fund it, and how we prioritize each one of those.
That's what I was hoping it meant. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Council, any other questions at this time? I have a question. The youth and government program, do we envision that being an eight-week course like the Citizens Academy or something in line with a semester internship at a college? What would a timeframe for participants like that? What are we looking for there?
We have yet to develop. I'll let our city clerk speak to that more fully about what we're exploring in terms of options.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the question. We are in the very beginning stages of trying to develop what that plan looks like. We are actively looking at what is out there with other agencies, what they're doing. But we are looking at maybe like a classroom style for some things, a mock council meeting to get them up here at the dais to understand what these meetings look like, as well as probably some fellow shadowing of staff within the city, seeing what they do on a day-to-day basis and things like that. So we're exploring a lot of different options.
Okay, it's still early in the process, I understand. Thank you. Councilman Diedrich.
Yeah, I had a question about reassessing the business incubator needs. And so could you speak a little bit more to that as to what you are recommending or asking us to look into in that regard?
Thank you for that question. So, yes, so right now, the plan actually calls for the development of a, specifically a business incubator plan and the selection of a facility that could provide for that. Rather than moving forward initially with the development of the plan and a site for a business incubator program, we're recommending first that we evaluate really what our startup businesses in this community need, our target industries, and make sure that we're fulfilling their needs and not just moving forward with this one component. So we're really saying at this stage, we want to do a full assessment of the needs of our business community and then how we can best support them, and then make a recommendation if that may or may not include a big business incubator facility itself.
And so would that be by way of surveys? Or how, do we have a plan for what that would look like? Or what the timeframe for achieving that and getting back to us would look like?
So we're going through a couple of studies at present. One of them, in the regular council meeting tonight, our SEDS program. And so we'll be doing that analysis as part of that study and update, and then can make a recommendation on whether or not, and next year, we may be coming back to make a recommendation to incorporate that. But before we make that decision, we think it's important that you have that information.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Thank you. Something I was realizing as I was flipping through this, there's some excellent recommendations in here, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness of staff on wanting to do more for the city. With these recommendations that are here, would any of them be anticipated as requiring additional staff or personnel that would be in addition to whatever it takes to organize the program? Or do we have the staff to pull off these additional recommendations?
So we, it's a mix. So yes, we do, at its core. When we talk, for instance, about our transit mobility plan, we really have already our complete streets plan, and we're prioritizing those projects based upon staff availability and the resources that we have available. So that's going to come in the form of your capital improvement program and the recommended projects. It's just helping us to make sure that we're focusing and making sure that we're looking at, you know, addressing some of those last-mile issues more readily when we're able to do so and the funding is available. So it's not necessarily looking at allocating additional staff for any one of these components. We had already anticipated that we wanted to support a youth and government program, provided their support from the council to really make sure that we're supporting that community engagement like we do with the Citizens Academy. And this shouldn't require additional staffing to support that.
So you're talking about reallocating our current assets as opposed to adding personnel or assets or additional expense beyond the program itself?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
Councilman Dynas.
Thank you. On the thriving economy here, you talked about the reassessing the city's business incubator. And I know we did the SEDS, I don't know, shortly after I came on council, and it was quite in-depth. So on this, I think you might have answered, I'm not quite sure, but the SEDS will identify key industries. Are we going to now revisit the SEDS and then decide whether what's viable and current and what needs to be redone? So this all works into the whole reassessing the city's business incubator aspect of it?
That's correct. So we have, it's a great question, thank you. We already have the SED study, we'll be doing an update of that. So we want to make sure that we've got the most current information before we move forward with that particular component.
Okay, because it said that it will identify. So what we're doing is updating that in case there's some other, our key industries, we decide to change it, then we can have that opportunity to address it, then.
That's correct.
From an economic development perspective, and with, I mean, the world has changed a lot in the last six years with COVID and how people are shopping and delivering and purchasing cars and the car industry and all that. So there's a number of industries that have evolved in the last six years. And so we're just wanting to make sure that we're looking out to where we need to be from. And we have to update that SED study every five years anyways for grant capabilities. So we do annual reports and performance evaluations against it. But it hasn't been updated in-
updated in about five years. So a lot in the world has changed and we just want to position ourselves for the future, not the past. Great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, I'm going to move on to the public comment portion. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak or has any correspondence been received?
No correspondence, and I do not have any public speakers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, this is our time to discuss and talk about the adjustments and the recommendations. Councilman Dynas?
I'll start. Give you a chance to. You know, I think it's, and we're only, what, a year into the whole plan? And so I'm glad that we're looking at it and just doing some tweaking to make sure we stay current without changing everything before you have a chance to make sure that, you know, the plan is hitting in the right direction. So I support these changes. I think it's nice to look and see what needs to be changed without having to, you know, go back and redo all of it. I think the tweaking that's being done makes sense. And so I appreciate the time and effort staff's put into it and I support it. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem Carwin.
Yeah, I echo those sentiments. You know, one of the pages that stands out to me is the second page on here, the plan development and all of the material that went into creating this strategic plan, the amount of effort, the surveys, the stakeholder interviews, the online and all of that kind of stuff. We've got a lot, we really did get a lot of input on this. I remember being critical of the surveying when they were talking about it, but we ended up supplementing that in a lot of other ways to make up for that. And again, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, that I really compliment the Menifee staff on how they can do more to meet our strategic plan. And these recommendations, based on the answers to my questions, I think they're excellent. And I don't think there's anything in here I would discourage the staff from doing.
I'll go ahead and hop in. When it comes to Section 1 connectivity and mobility, we've been talking a lot about the traffic signals being synced and the fiber optic connectivity. And so I would like to see staff keep an eye on that. We've been telling the public, we want to deliver on that. And I would just like it to be highlighted that traffic flow is very important. And it's important for me. And so I would like to make it a focal point for connectivity and mobility. I would like to see that accomplished. The other thing about unique identity, I think an element that would be beneficial to unique identity was, once we get to that point and we're able to establish what our unique identity is, implementing it in our branding and sharing that and marketing who we are and letting the public know this is who Menifee is. When you come to Menifee, this is what we stand for. So I would like to see us incorporate it into our branding going forward when all the studies are done. Community engagement. One thing I would like to see improved is, on our social media, I would like to see us share the city council meetings more often. I don't think I see enough posts about that. I want the public to know when our city council meetings are, looking back on my phone, I haven't seen a city, the last meeting I saw was a planning commission meeting posting from December. So I think we need to do a better job of sharing our city council meetings to the public so they know they can come and attend and they're welcomed here. Thriving economy. I haven't heard too much lately about the business incentive programs we offer and the sales tax exchanges. We've talked about it in our past with Applebee's and Savage Chef and helping them start up, but I would like us to see that highlighted again and offering these small businesses those sales tax exchanges. Those are my thoughts.
You're talking about like the menu plan, the menu grant?
Well, yeah, that grant, from what I understand, was ARPA money. Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Yeah. The sales tax exchange is something the city was able to implement, correct, City Manager Via?
Yes, Mayor, you're absolutely right. We used to have, maybe if you go back four, five years ago, we had more difficulty attracting some of the, some of the prime businesses. So we would offer tax incentives and reimbursements. You know, over the last three years, we haven't seen that we're having a hard time attracting them. Although, you know, we're going to be starting a difficult year, you know, we're starting to see revenues, projections come down. So we may come up with something that would help alleviate that, you know, over the next six to nine months in things like tax sharing agreement, reimbursement agreements, incentives to write off some of the development impact fees and things like that so that we can help some of those commercial developers that are struggling because the cost of, either cost of fees, cost of land, cost of materials could be written down. So we will come back with something like that.
Okay, great. Sounds like there's brainstorming going on for those items, so great. Wanted to highlight that. Those are my thoughts. Councilman Diedrich.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, my understanding was a part of looking at this, aside from just a general check-in and look-in, right, was also for, especially us three, the new council members, to be able to look at it and see if there's anything that we would like to, you know, adjust or add or help contribute to this, right? And so I was just wanting to throw out there, you know, a big hairy audacious goal, right, of something maybe to look at. You know, we've talked about under unique identity that, you know, what is Menifee's unique identity? What, you know, and we've talked to residents, we've talked amongst ourselves, what is that, right? I mean, what draw, what is going to draw people to come to Menifee, right? Temecula has the wineries, Lake Elsinore has the lake. We, you know, we don't necessarily have something specific geographically like that to attract. So some, you know, I'm a huge proponent of open spaces and preserves and activity, physical activity, sports, things like that. So I don't know, I'm floating out the idea of, you know, I would like to look at what the possibility of maybe, you know, creating a regional park. We don't really have something like that in this area, something along the lines of, you know, Irvine's Grape Park or Balboa Park in San Diego, something like that where this would really be an attraction that would bring people to our city as well as a huge benefit for our residents.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. City Manager Via, is that something, a sports regional park, is that something we can put as a element or is that more of a CIP plan? Or how can we push that forward in writing for staff?
So I'd recommend, so that would be something that would be blended in as part of our Parks Master Plan and would be incorporated more specifically as part of our capital improvement program effort in terms of allocation of space and the development of a regional park because we would need both land and the resources to develop it. So that certainly could be something that...
Maybe like the size of an empty golf course? Something along those parameters?
That certainly would be a possibility. So that's something when we're going through our capital improvement program budget process in terms to bring forward and something if council would like to have that be considered.
Would we need to do any kind of, you know, looking into feasibility or anything before that, before we get to that budgeting process? Or is that literally the time that we would want to initiate?
So you'd probably want to initiate, staff would ultimately have to go back and, you know, identify, is there land available? What options would we have? And that would be a long-term planning effort, not something that would be done immediately, but something that would be put on the list to start working towards if that is a priority for the council above some other items.
So I need to bring that back up at a future CIP meeting, is what you're saying?
We should bring that up. We have made note of it so we know that that's something that you'd like to consider and that certainly that could be added for discussion.
I like you're dreaming big, let's do it. City Manager Via.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. If you wanted to, I wanted to expand a little bit on it because we did do a master plan and the master plan talks about our future needs. But if you wanted to think big or bigger or more robust, you know, we can certainly add that to the thoughts when we bring, you know, back some ideas. Maybe we can amend the plan and create a huge regional park that draws, you know, hikers and bikers and things like that into the plan. You know, I'm thinking Central Park in New York, you know, that, at one time, that was a dream and look at it now. So if that's the idea that you have, maybe if you, if we can get consensus from the council, we can probably add it as an element to be looked at and incorporated and see if there's any opportunities over the next three to four years.
That would be my request, if, I don't know what the rest of the council feels on that matter, but that's, that's something that I would definitely be interested in pursuing.
We also heard two different things up there. One was a regional sports park and one was a regional park. And those are kind of two different things. Sometimes they can be combined or are a part of each other, but we, those two visions are a little different from each other.
Okay. Well, I know the unique identity, we haven't really determined it yet, but I like where you're going with appreciating the open space in the park and incorporating that into our identity. Counsel, what are your thoughts on this? Anything right now?
Where are we? Didn't we get a consultant to give us some options on our unique identity, what that is? And Mayor, I know that unique identity comes directly out of your thoughts, that I think you're the one, just like social infrastructure came from the former mayor and we have mortgage-paying jobs coming from Councilman Dynas. So I think unique identity in this were your words. I'd be interested to hear what your thoughts are on the unique identity.
Well, I would love to see, I think there are two options. We can do something where we incorporate our history, bring in a history element, make that part of our identity, make it organic. Or we can do something a little bit more artificial because I know we have multiple communities, Quell Valley, Sun City, Romoland, Menifee Lakes, and so make it something a little bit more artificial. But I don't want to, I want to respect the public and give them an opportunity to take part in all these surveys as well and see what the public sees as a unique identity.
Can I jump in real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
I didn't mean to cut you off there, Mayor. And my, I think that this falls under unique identity, the broad category, and I'm not proposing that this regional park would be our unique identity, just to be clear, right? I think it would just be a component of, part of Menifee creating what our unique identity is.
Okay. In that case, I think it would be best suited for a CIP discussion in the spring. Okay?
And Mayor, if I could add, so, you know, I did mention earlier that we are, have our placemaking, identity and tourism master plan that is underway. And I think there will be some elements that are going to come out of that that might drive some of your decisions and what you would like us to look at moving forward. So I think that will be a really informative process to go through and including that. And then also within our community engagement and social infrastructure, one of the areas that is highlighted is the development of our unique park amenities. So that's something we're always looking at. It is central to the Parks Master Plan and I certainly think if that's where council wants to focus in terms of when we have development opportunities, it's certainly something that we can do.
I was just thinking, thinking bigger, right? So to me, though, what's on there is, you know, the parks that we have that pop up from piece to, time to time, place to place. I was thinking, my thought at least, was adding this to this, this right here, to have that as kind of a driving factor through all these things, through the CIP, through the placemaking meetings, that as a concept that we're looking at as we're going through that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Diedrich. I think a couple of great ideas for unique identity would be appreciating our history. We were named after Luther Menifee Wilson, who was a gold miner. Maybe having our theme as a city being gold mining, maybe something a little bit, we can make it artificial and say, hey, we're a military-themed town, we have many veterans here. But I am interested in what the public would like because we do have many communities here. I think it's an important question. Councilman Temple.
Yeah, just the current discussion and then also sort of echoing what Ben said. You know, we're not creating any more land in Menifee. And a lot of the land is simply undeveloped and already claimed for certain purposes. And I don't know if I would remember this come spring when we talk more about CIP projects, but I've always wondered, and I was visiting it just a couple of weeks ago, Cabean Park, that's 640 acres, and that lies just on the outside boundary of our city, but right there in Quell Valley. And I've wondered, is that something that we could incorporate from the county? 640 acres of a very small park and then open land for us to maintain as a trail area, something recreational use, portion it off to do different things. But I'm wondering, is that something that is feasible and hasn't been talked about?
Well, I think that's a great idea, Councilman Temple. You know, I think there could be potential. It is owned by Riverside County. You know, the city would have to annex it and be, I'm sure there has to be fiscal analysis of what it would cost to maintain and all of the investments. I think Councilman Diedrich and Councilman Temple, you guys are on great tracks and dreaming big. And I love open space and nature and I'm sure many of our residents do too with our agricultural history. I think where we're at right now is, do we add this as an element or are these parks a CIP plan? You know, I think it's part of a CIP plan, but if the council would like to push in a different direction, that's the council's discretion as well.
I get the impression this discussion is more visionary than project-based. So, you know, the feasibility of a particular project is not something for a specific plan. I think the idea behind what we're doing is part of the strategic plan that we've got here. And saying we want this, this, and this are elements that would be either CIP or specific future agenda items or things like that. This is more of a what direction we're going in, not where we're going to be when we're finished.
Okay, so what terminology would we put and in which category?
What terminology are you looking for?
Councilman Dynas and Diedrich.
A regional sports park isn't really specific planned, strategic planned. We're adding more parks, would that be just more parks in general? Would that be more strategic planning?
So if it would be beneficial and council would like to enhance what we already have in the plan itself, just as a guiding document right now, we do have the objective area that says develop unique park amenities, green spaces, trails, cultural and recreational facilities and programming that's aligned with the Parks Master Plan, could add in some additional verbiage there that would integrate opportunities for regional parks and highlight Menifee's history or something along those lines that supports that but enables us to be looking at when we're talking about capital and investments, you're looking at the full picture of all the things that you have as priorities and then we're able to work through that and staff can bring back some various options that could be considered over time. So if I might suggest, if you want to enhance the plan itself, that maybe adding in some of that language under our community engagement and social infrastructure component of the report, I think that might work.
Okay, so it looks like we can add it to Section D, right? In the language, developing unique park amenities, green spaces and trails, add language to that?
Yes. Staff can come back with a revision and that incorporates the comments that you've provided today and then you can adopt that as part of your update if there's consensus that you would like to integrate some of those components for exploration.
Okay, yeah, I'm in support of it. So I heard some terminology, I see specifically where it would fall in the plan and that helps bring clarity for me. Councilman Dynas?
Yes, so let me get this straight. Would you repeat what would be added to Objective D then? That's, I mean, what is in D now that would preclude us from doing what has been suggested?
Absolutely nothing. It would just call it out more specifically if council would like to see something integrated in terms of verbiage specific to regional park. like to see something integrated in terms of verbiage specific to regional park amenities of some type.
My only concern is this is a high-level, what Councilman, Mayor Protem referred to, caught myself, that, you know, that, it's in there, I think it's possible, to me, the best place to address this was to revisit our Parks Master Plan, where we'll do that. Something as this globally looking, to narrow it down and restrict us, you know, is not what this was, to me, was meant to do when we did it. It was supposed to be, I mean, I like the ideas, and there's other places we can do, you know, nature trails and stuff, that's great. But I think, you know, the staff has heard, and I, you know, I think when it comes to CIP, you know, it sounds like we need to revisit our park master plan on that. But I think we need to try to keep the visionary part high level, so, because things keep changing. Same reason we have to redo the SEDS. Life has changed. So they're good ideas, I just don't know if we want to narrow ourselves down and that. But I'm not gonna, I mean, if that's what the rest of the council, I'm good for it, but we need to try to remember what this vision plan is for.
I would agree. You know, we were going back and forth, would it go into CIP, would it go into parks? And I was having trouble finding a spot for it here in the terminology. So those are my thoughts for now. Councilman Diedrich, you're in the queue?
Yeah, I would just add that I don't, to me, I don't see it as narrowing or limiting, right? I don't see it as a requirement. And you're right, that it's, nothing precludes it the way it is, but it's also not necessarily focused on or something that, because again, when I see throughout the years, as I see, I see it's, you know, little parks coming in as developments come in, and we don't really have anything. And I think, like Councilmember Temple pointed out, you know, we're not creating more land, right? So eventually, as we build out, if we don't look at it and focus on it, it'll disappear, right? And so I was just saying, to me, it is a visionary kind of thing of just an overarching focus of maybe we keep this on our radar. And that's why I thought maybe this would be the right place to add similar language to what Rebecca said, as just maybe we keep this on our radar that we look at. But I'm up to whatever the consensus of the council is.
Okay. Well, I would like to move forward with this. Go ahead, City Manager Via. When I say move forward, find a conclusion to this, because we've been on this topic for a while. Go ahead, City Manager Via.
Thank you, Mayor. I think so that it's recorded and memorialized, we can add a little bit of verbiage into 3D at the end. It says, including but not limited to consideration of a regional park, there may or may not include addition of new land and/or existing facilities like the Kabian Park. So that's broad generally enough for us to go back and look and then come back with you and maybe add it as part of the strategic plan. And, I mean, as part of the CIP in the future. But if you add a definition that's broad enough, it'll give us enough to go back and start assessing and looking at feasibility. I think we have enough from all the comments to be able to come back and see if we can do something.
Okay. Sounds like we are heard. Okay. Any other comments from council? Any other amendments or changes we want to make, recommendations? Okay. Seeing no other comments? Staff, do you have enough information to move forward?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, I asked. I asked for public comments, yeah. No? None?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's all we have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, City Manager Via. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Kramer. Thank you, council. I will adjourn this meeting at 4:51. Thank you.